An open session.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, how do you vote, Priscilla?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and we will reconvene in open session. Yeah, but I don't know if she started recording.
I can hear your voices.
Oh, okay. Everyone listens. Okay, could we please stand? Could we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the March 19th, 2018 Board of Selectmen's meeting. On the agenda this evening, we have public service announcements. We have a public hearing at 6:30 for application for new license restaurant all alcohol at PNB LLC doing business as Old Sturbridge Pizza. 6:45, we have a public hearing, excuse me, application for new license restaurant all alcohol, PNB LLC, doing business as Old Sturbridge Village. Then we have department head reports, the building inspector, town administrators update, all business, new business correspondence, and approval of minutes. Why don't we do the public hearings first? It is we're already a little late and do service announcements later. Mary?
Okay, notification is hereby given that an application has been filed by PNB LLC doing business as Old Sturbridge Pizza for a common victual all alcohol license with the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen for premises located at 392 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass. In accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 138, a public hearing will be held on Monday, March 19th, 2018, at 6:30 PM at the Veterans Memorial Hall, Sturbridge Town Hall, 308 Street, Sturbridge, and it's dated March 1st, 2018.
Okay, do we have a representative?
Yes, my name is Dennis Powers.
Oh, could you wait till you sit, please, so the mic can pick it up? It's for the people at home on TV.
Thank you, my name is Dennis Powers. I'm an attorney from Springfield, Mass. I represent your petitioner. My client is stuck in traffic on his way to this meeting, so I apologize for that. Should I, can I?
Sure.
Mr. Singh has been, he purchased the business back in August of 2017, and he's been operating the facility since that time. It's the second restaurant that he owns. He's been in the food business for approximately 20 years. He owns a restaurant in Hartford that has a liquor license, so he's experienced in that side of the business. He has a SafeServe. He's certified as a food manager. I have some paperwork to that effect that I can turn in. The restaurant, if you've been in it, it's about 2,000 square feet. As you come in, on the right side is a sitting area. I didn't count, I went there for the first time this afternoon. My client says there's about, there's a seating capacity. He thought about 40 seats. He plans to have a bartender who's TIP certified. I think he has one, and we would certainly submit that paperwork as part of our, as a condition of the application. And I can try and answer any questions on his behalf that the board might have.
Okay, that TIP certification is very important. We will definitely need a manager who is TIP certified or one of the other educations. I'll say, I did have a question on, well, just say page two. Yeah, flip it.
It's the one that begins ownership number five, correct?
Yeah, ownership is at the top. Does have a two down at the bottom right, if you have the same copies we do.
It's the application for retail alcoholic beverage license.
Okay.
Okay, on the part description of premises, it says proposed seating capacity is 30, but then you said proposed occupancy 40. So where are you going to put the other 10 people?
I can't answer that question. If Mike was here, I'm sure he could, but I don't know if that was an estimate or not, but.
Is he taking into consideration, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, through you, is he taking into consideration the employees at the time who are not seated?
He might be.
I mean, that would make sense.
Well, is the difference of 10, I don't think there'll be 10 employees.
No, I would think not.
Well, I was there. There looked like there were three pizza makers and a couple of delivery people, and it's a Monday, and they said it's a Monday, so it's very slow today, so I'm not sure what that would be.
Yeah, I, can I, can I ask if, there is a takeout business there, and the occupancy is how many people can be in the building at one given time. The seating capacity is how many chairs or seats there are in the building, so maybe there's a difference of definition there?
That makes sense, too.
Okay, Mr. Powers, I forgot to ask you, do you have the green cards?
I do. Thank you.
Did you know, how many, Anna, how many?
On your butters list, Mr. Attorney Powers, do you have your list of how many people were on that list? It seems maybe that this is a...
I do, I have two people on that list.
Thank you.
Okay, and is the school one of them?
It is. Burgess Elementary School. It was signed by the town clerk and delivered.
Yes. Does the rest of the board have any questions? So what's the board want to do? I mean, I'm sure even on these numbers, Mr. Singh can give us an explanation, and we will definitely need a manager that's TIP certified.
TIP certified manager.
Okay, can we, sorry. I was going to make a motion.
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion to accept and approve the request for a all alcohol license for Old Sturbridge Pizza on 392 Main Street.
Second.
Manager.
With the condition of we get the...
TIP certified and...
By manager.
Yes, and by a manager, yes.
I hate to be that guy, but you have to ask the citizens if they would like to ask in an enclosure public hearing first.
Oh, that's right.
I'm sorry.
I've been away too long. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to it? No, okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of closing? Okay, now, Priscilla, sorry.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the all alcohol license for Old Sturbridge Pizza, excuse me, 392 Main Street.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? You did put on that.
With the TIP cert, yeah, with the same.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, four to nothing.
Safe travels.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Oh, he does, is he going to have to change his advertising? Because his mailers say, you know, you can bring your own.
Oh, okay, we'll definitely do that.
Yeah, because you can't, can't do both.
Definitely can't do both.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Would you like the takeout menu?
Yes. Okay, Mary?
Okay, now we're OSV. Notification is hereby given that an application has been filed by Old Sturbridge Village, Inc., doing business as Old Sturbridge Village, for an inholder wine and malt license with the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen for premises located at 1 Old Sturbridge Village Road, Sturbridge, Mass. In accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 138, a public hearing will be held on Monday, March 19th, 2018, at 6:45 PM, Veterans Memorial Hall, Sturbridge Town Hall, Sturbridge, and it's dated March 8th, 2018, and March 9th, 2018.
Okay, would you please introduce yourself for the record?
Alexis Conti, Vice President for Visitor Services at Old Sturbridge Village.
Brian Amity, the Lodging Manager for the Old Sturbridge Inn and Reader Family Lodges.
Okay, would you please explain what it is you'd like to do?
So, the Old Sturbridge Inn and Reader Family Lodges is looking to acquire from the board permission to have a retail liquor license. Oftentimes, we have guests that are looking to purchase a bottle of wine, a glass of wine, so a wine split, I should say, or a bottle of beer. It is not often, but it does happen, and, you know, this addition will help us to please the guests.
Any questions from the board? Now, I know Old Sturbridge Village has two entities, right?
We're the Old Sturbridge Inn, which is part of Old Sturbridge Village, but the lodging operation.
Yes, but who is the present liquor license to?
So it is currently under an inholder for the Oliver White Tavern and the premise of Old Sturbridge Village under the name of Lisa Hardigan, who is the manager of our food and beverage division, catering division, I should say. So she maintains that liquor license. This would be a different license in that we would be selling rather than pouring during those open hours.
If you look at the last page, Madam Chair, of this packet that I've given to you, I actually printed the page from the ABCC. It talks about on-premises licenses. I put a little star next to the hotel one. I think you, well, you applied for a Section 12 hotel, which is a number two.
And also, you have listed besides the indoor area, patio, deck, and outdoor. I couldn't quite read the map, where exactly.
So the outdoor area, it's a small area, I'd say about 15 feet from the front door of the lodging office. It's a small fire pit with about seven or eight chairs that surround the power. So it's seasonal only, you know, summer, spring, summer, and fall mainly.
Okay, because the ABCC does have recommendations for controlling any outdoor area. Do you have plans for...
So currently, that will fall to the lodging manager, thus the reason that we felt that that outdoor area, being the proximity so close to the office, would be the area for that.
Right.
Okay, because it says the outdoor area must be contiguous to the licensed premise with either a clear view of the area from the inside premises or alternately, the licensee may commit to providing management personnel. But I don't think the size of the crowd would do that. But it also says the premise must be enclosed by a fence, rope, or other means to prevent access from a public walkway. Is there a public walkway nearby?
There's no public walkway here because you have the office, and then the clerk sits right there, and there's a window that looks right out. It's just, the walkway is from the lodging office right to the fire pit, just a small walkway. So it's not a public walkway where people...
Okay, just covering.
Yeah.
Good to know. Okay, questions from the board?
Madam Chair, a few months ago, the, our Economic Development Quarter and Brian invited businesses from all over town to visit the site. I visited, the town administrator visited, and several other persons were there, and we got to view the sitting area that is currently there, and it's considerable distance from any public walkway. It is visible from the area, I believe, that the, the, the wine and malt beverages would be sold. So, you know, just from being on site, I can, I can say that it is not accessible by the public. It would be...
Correct.
Just by its topography would be, would be contained from, from the general public.
Oh, yes, okay. And Brian, I see you are TIP certified.
Yes, I am, yes.
Any other questions from the board? Any comments from the public? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Four to nothing? All set? So seasonal, right?
Didn't that just close the public?
Oh, yeah.
We need a motion to actually...
Motion to actually, due to license.
I haven't paid him his two meetings.
Mary, I have the same issue.
But I'm older than you. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the wine and malt license to Old Sturbridge, Inc., with Brian Amity as the manager of the Old Sturbridge Village Lodges in Old Sturbridge Village.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Thank you all.
So, when's the season going to begin?
Tomorrow is the first day of spring, so there's hope that it's just around the corner, but who really knows?
Wednesday's coming. Wednesday doesn't look too good.
It could be another last Easter, who knows?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with it.
Okay, now, let's go back to public service announcements to get them. And we'll be with you in a minute, Nelson. Okay? Okay, Priscilla, do you have any public service?
Just a reminder for people of the Meet the Candidate Night, on Thursday night, open and free to the public. Comfort Inn. Residents and business owners are welcome from 6:30 to 8 o'clock at the Comfort Inn this Thursday night.
Okay, Mike?
That's, that's exactly what I was going to say. Comfort Inn's at 2:15 Chelton Road, that's Route 20, behind, oh...
Yeah, it's easy to get in from Hall Road.
Hall Road as well, yeah.
Mary? Okay, well, the Sturbridge Community Preservation Committee will hold a public hearing to study the needs, possibility, possibilities and resources of the community with regards to community preservation on Wednesday, March 21st, 2018, at 7:00 PM in Veterans Memorial Hall in the Sturbridge Town Hall. Then, the Town of Sturbridge Planning Department and Open Space Committee are in the process of updating the current open space and recreation plan that expires this May. An open space and recreation plan is a document that provides a plan for the green infrastructure of a community. This green infrastructure includes things such as water supply protection, open land, working farms and forests, wildlife habitats, parks, ball fields, recreation areas, trails, and greenways. Just as the town plans for schools, roads, water, and wastewater infrastructure, location for housing in commercial and industrial areas to enhance the economic vitality of a community, the green infrastructure is equally important and requires careful planning. Okay, and it invites people to be part of the process. There is a survey online that people can get to. Okay, and they, the survey is up until March 30th. Okay, there will also be a public forum in Page Hall at the Public House on April 11th at 6:30 PM. Refreshments will be served, and you will be able to vote on the photos. Prizes will be awarded. The photo is a contest, and the winning photo will be on the cover of the new open space plan. You can also go online and read when and where all these will be happening. There's also a public hearing notice from the Sturbridge Planning Board, proposed zoning bylaw amendment. In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Sturbridge Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the meeting room at the Center Office Building, located at 301 Main Street, Sturbridge, at 6:35 PM on Tuesday, April 10th, 2018, to consider an amendment to the town's zoning bylaw as petitioned by the Board of Selectmen. The proposal would amend the zoning bylaws by inserting the new Chapter 32, marijuana not medically prescribed, which would prohibit all non-medical marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, or any other types of licensed marijuana-related businesses within the Town of Sturbridge. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on these zoning proposals should appear at the time and place designated. The full text of the proposed zoning revisions may be reviewed at the town clerk's office, 308 Main Street. There's also an announcement of a ribbon cutting for Red Door Realty, Thursday, March 22nd, from 4 to 6 PM at 71 Main Street, Route 131. Also, our yearly notice from the Water Department on water main flushing. It will take place December, oh, December, from Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018, until Friday, May 11th, 2018. We will start on the east end of town. The flushing will begin at 8:00 AM and finish by 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday each day. All customers should be aware that main, that water main flushing can cause some temporary water discoloration throughout the community. The discoloration comes from small particles of iron and manganese that are removed from the pipe walls. The discoloration is temporary and typically clears in four to five hours. It is recommended that residents check the water before use, especially prior to doing laundry. Do not try to bleach stained clothes as this will set the stain permanently. Customers can call the Water Department at 508-347-2513 for further assistance. Also, from the Town of Sturbridge, the 2017 Water Quality Report is now available on the website. Hard copies are also available. Okay. Okay, next, we have department head, Nelson, building inspector.
Can I just add one thing?
Oh, Mary?
Just for, I would be interested if I were paying attention, if I were watching the Selectmen's meeting. So, the Water Quality Report, in summary, says, "We are proud to report that last year your drinking water met all applicable health standards regulated by the state and federal government." Just in case I didn't want to read the whole report.
The report is on the town's website.
Good evening, Nelson.
Good evening. I was asked to come today, not only for the monthly report, which you received for February. It was a slow month, but the other two things is unsafe structures, because we have a presentation on what we'd like you, as a board, to consider. And then the fee changes, we've got a little bit about them, too, so if it's all right.
Sure.
Hi, Madam Chairman, I wouldn't mind going into the unsafe structures.
No, it's fine.
I'm going to turn the lights off so people at home can look at the screen.
The other thing is, I didn't realize at first, I guess, that last, last week's meeting, it was brought up about having a list of abandoned houses, I think Mike brought it up. So what I did is I, and I just did it today, a list of problem properties, but I've got copies for everybody.
Oh, do you, go ahead.
And you can look at them. And I've got little notes to them to say where they're near and everything, so you'll understand which ones they are, which you probably would anyways. Thank you.
Thanks, Nelson.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
What it is, is I think there's been an interest in town in figuring a way to clean up some of the properties, because it's got to the point where, especially lately, we've had a lot of fires, there's a lot of buildings that are burnt out. There's a lot of buildings that need to and should come down, and I'm, I'm having some trouble with it, especially the ones owned by the banks and stuff. And one in particular was owned by a certain bank, and I, we thought we had a law set, and we had talked to them a lot, and they said they were negotiating. And then about a week ago, they called the building department, and they said they sold the loan. So it's a whole new people now. So what we're proposing is, is a way to, 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 not force them, but, but for the town to actually take the buildings down ourselves. And the first screen, can we just back up to that first screen? And, well, actually, it's just unsafe structures. And what I did is a, an overview and a procedure. And I'm trying to explain it so you, as a board, will understand what, what the building code allows us to do legally. And, okay, the next screen, what I did is I broke it down, and the first, the second slide is authority. And I listed out, and I have backup to all this, too. And it just lists all the chapters and sections, whether it be some of my, like, like the building code, CMOS. And then the CMOS refers to some Mass. General Laws. And I hit, I highlighted the real important stuff. And the Massachusetts Building Code, that 114.4 and that 114.1, basically, it says violations, and it says what I can find people for not doing what they're supposed to as far as taking buildings down. It lists per day and everything. And then the second one, that 116, that's the important one, the unsafe structures and equipment. What it does is it refers us to the Mass. General Law, 143, Section 6 through 12. That 6 through 12, as you'll see as the screens go along, explains what we can and can't do as a town. And then I've got 116, Section 5, states that upon refusal or the neglect of a said owner to comply with such notice, any building official can act under the authority of the MGL 143, 6 through 12. And as we hit these slides, it'll become clear and explain it better. So go to the next slide. Procedure. Again, I wrote down the MGLs, 143, 6, states that if an inspector is informed by a report otherwise that a building is dangerous to life or limb, the inspector is to inspect in order to remove and make it safe it is, in fact, dangerous. Now, we have some buildings like that, and I have inspected them, and I have wrote the notices to take them down. We haven't succeeded completely as far as people doing it. Like I say, part of it is, is some of the banks, they're not even around here. And there's some buildings now that we would like to take down, so we're making this proposal. 143, Section 7, states that, you know, the Selectmen can order the inspector of buildings, myself, to immediately, 12 o'clock the following day, of service of notice to make safe or remove. I mean, that's something that you're allowed to do because of this section, but let's keep reading. 143, Section 8, states that if the owner refuses or neglects to comply with the building inspector's notice, what I can do is I can set up a survey board. And what that's saying is the survey board will consist of a fire chief, a disinterested citizen. That would be appointed by me, and a town surveyor, which I believe in this town would probably be Greg, but we can figure out who the town surveyor is. but we can figure out who the town surveyor is. I would set up the board, I would, I would inform them that there's, there's this certain property, and, and they're not doing what they're supposed to, and they would actually inspect the property, and they would decide if it's, if it's safe, secure, and, and open to the weather, which is that Chapter 143, Section 9, states that when the board does their report, they would go to, to the site, they would look at the property. If they decided it was unused, uninhabited, abandoned, and open to the weather, they could say that, you know, it needs to come down, and it's required to be made safe, secured, and if it's not, you as selectman can, can order me to take the building down. The problem is, is we do have to have funding if the town does it, because any, any contract that we sign, the town has to have the funding for it before we, we sign any contracts. So, you know, a lien would have to be put, put as a debt, which is allowed through Section 3A of Chapter 139. Go to the next screen. The process of collecting the debt is, there's, the good side of this is, is the buildings, if the owners, you know, didn't take them down, we could. The other part of the process that we have to think about is collecting the debt, because if, if we put the money out, you know, there's, there's a way to have to collect it. And what it is, is Chapter 139, Section 3A, states that the demolition or removal of a building or structure of securing of vacant land is the owner's responsibility, but if they refuse, the town can constitute a, a debt due to the town with the interest of 6% per annum from the date that, that debt is due. There is some stipulations, it's got to be filed within 90 days. Leans take effect upon filing of debt and shall constitute for two years from first day of October until the next following date of filing. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, is if we do it, we're looking at a two-year period there, and then the second part of that, Chapter 41, Section 38A, there's a process of collecting the debt for non-payment. There's an additional three years of it not being paid per Chapter 59, Section 53, and Chapter 41, Section 38 and a half, that the debt has to be certified by the assessors, who then can forthwith add debt to tax on property. So the downside somewhat is it, it could possibly take five years to collect your money. The other thing is, I, I think some people will, will do it voluntarily at that point, when they know that we can force them to do it. Can we go to the next screen? Some of the other highlights we have, we have to think about is, Chapter 139, Section 2, allows an appeal to Superior Court within three days after the service of the violation notice. My recommendation would be if we do decide to do it, we make sure that thirty, that three days goes by, so to see if there is any appeals. And then there's a Chapter 143, Section 100, that states that the appeal can be made to the Building Board of Appeals within 45 days, but that's only an exception if the situation involves immediate peril. So if you took the building down within that first three days, they wouldn't have, the way I read it, you wouldn't have the option to appeal to the Building Board of Appeals. But it's something that we, we should be thinking about. Next screen. Proposal. When I say the proposal, and, and I've been doing part of this already, I send out violation letters explaining a problem, and that they must come into the office to explain how they plan to fix. I give them a couple of weeks with a timeframe, and I ask for a Chapter 34 review unless they plan to take the building down and do new construction, because they gotta tell me how they plan to make it safe. I've, I've done that. The second letters, this would be new, because what I'm making, I, I've sent out quite a few violation letters to different properties in town, but it, but most of them aren't complying at this moment. So what we would do is if, if we had the funding that we could take them down, I would send out a second letter, and I would, that I would explain that if they didn't correct it, that, that we would do a survey, I would ask for the survey, ask for the selectmen to, for me to, to, to go within, with the surveying board, and take a look at the house and decide if, if it needs to be repaired, come down, whatever. Give them a couple of weeks to respond. I would, I would also explain to them that they can be fined up to $1,000 a day. There's other things I would explain as far as the 6% per annum interest, the fact that if the town does it, you have to pay prevailing wage. So what I'm saying is I would, I would explain to them in every way that, the bottom line is we want them to do it, but we would explain to them the consequences if they didn't do it. Then I'd send out the third letter explaining about survey process. I would explain that we planned to do a survey on a given date, and explain that we will remove or secure if declared unsafe by the board, put a lien on the property. We'll explain, again, that the lien will involve all costs, including cost, prevailing wage, which is big, 6% interest per annum, and money owes to the town through any town council, anything like that. If we decided to do it, what we'd have to do is, is set up some type of account. My proposal was 100,000, it could be more, it could be less, could be different. You as a board can talk about it. Right now, if you look at the list of properties, I think there's, there's a lot, there's like about five properties that we have, that, that we have problems with.
Nelson, on that list though, I think number three has a typo in it.
Okay.
It's Fisk Hill, not?
Yeah, it is Fisk Hill, you're right, you're right. Yeah, and if you see what I put for notes, I think most of you'll know which buildings I'm talking about. I think at this moment, the toughest one is the one right up top, that Seven Main, and Leon and I, we've worked with, with the first bank, and I thought we had it set, and then it all fell apart, because they sold the loan. I think they knew they were gonna sell the loan, and they kept telling us, and they kept asking for extensions. So now we're gonna start over with the other bank. The other building, Craig had, had mentioned that before, that particular building, it's unsafe in a respect, there's a lot of stuff inside that building, you can't even walk in that building. If there's ever a fire, what would worry me about that building, is it so close to some of the other buildings, right on that same side, that if there's ever a fire, they'd have a tough time putting that out without even other buildings possibly going up. And like you said, Fisk Hill is, is the other one. That's getting worse every day, if you look at it, it's, it's actually starting to fall in worse and worse. It's been up for a long time. And then the last two, I think we have looked, I believe, the number four, I believe that's gonna come down in the next couple of weeks, the homeowner's taking it down. And then the fifth one, I think that that's gonna be taken care of as of, I was told as of tomorrow or maybe the next day, and that's been long running too. And, and every one of these, I've had complaints, people coming to the office. And like I say, right now, we don't have a lot of success, people will promise you they're gonna do it, and then they don't seem to do it. I think if we set up a fund through the town, that I think more people would do it, and a few that don't do it, we could do, and, and a lot of the money hopefully we'd get back, the problem being some of it would take time. It, it's really a policy that you, you as a board will have to talk about and decide, you know, is it worth it, and do you wanna do it? I think Sturbridge is, is a town that, you know, people think of, of a nice town, a tourist town. I, I think we should do something so that these buildings will go away. You know, it's, it's, it's something that, that you, you guys can think about. The, the other thing is if we do do it, I would ask to, to, to speak to town council with Leon, myself. Gene Mulbarn was at a meeting with us, and Barbara Barry was, and I think everybody would be on board with it, but we, we definitely would wanna show town council and get their opinion. There is other towns that are doing it. What's interested is Sunday's paper. If you look on the front page, there was a big article about Grafton, and it showed a new house and a wall that was falling down, and basically, if you read that, they're doing exactly what I'm saying here, and they're using these same chapters, these same sections, and doing the same thing to actually take houses down. So, I mean, basically, that's, that's about what I have to say, and, you know, it's something you guys will have to think about and decide if you wanna do it or not.
Give another slide.
Say that again?
Give another slide.
Oh, fines, okay, thank you. Hey, Chapter 143, Section 94A, states whoever violates any provision of the state building code, except the specialized codes described in Section 96, shall be punished by a fine of not more than $1,000, or by imprisonment for not more than one year or both. For each violation each day during a violation exists shall constitute a separate violation. So my plan is if, if we get to the point that, that we need to order the building down, every day in between there and when we do it, I would fine them, you know, so if it's a two-week period and it's $1,000 a day, you're talking $14,000. It should be an incentive for them to wanna do something. 143, Section 8, all it states is that you can't charge less than 100, and you can't charge more than 1,000 by the other section, and I think they put both sections in there just to make it clear. So basically, you got your choice between $100 and $1,000, and my suggestion would be the thousand, because it would give an incentive to take the building down if, you know, if we take the building down and give them incentive to do it themselves. And I, and I put in there about speaking to town council, because I thought that was really important. Just today, I had talked to the building commissioner in Grafton after seeing that article in a paper, and one of the biggest things he said was the same thing, make sure you speak to town council about the process, and that you're doing everything correctly, because there's some dates you have to hit, there's some recordings you have to, have to hit with certain days. I know Barbara Barry would like to talk to him as far as, as, as far as getting it on a tax rolls, you know, as far as paying, different questions she would have. Basically, I put there, I'd like to review the appeals process and the process of collecting debt, to make sure, I think we have it pretty well in our minds what we wanna do, but it always is good to talk to town council too, and it depends on, on, you know, whether you, you as a board are on board and wanna do it, don't wanna do it, so it's something to think about, and, you know, you could have me come back sometime and decide, give us an answer, whatever you wanna do, okay?
Okay, comments, questions from the board?
I have a comment.
Mary?
Nelson had, I'd run into you at another meeting, right? And you had suggested that you were doing this, and I read a little bit into it as well, and I, I support it. So I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels, but I support him moving ahead and consulting with council for their advice on, you know, the whole process of establishing and filing for the debt and all that, because what we don't wanna see happen, and I think you're on the same page, is create some kind of liability for the town.
Correct.
Because we didn't follow the proper procedure in tearing down some of these buildings, because that will happen if we don't. I mean, we're gonna have to be very diligent in how we go about meeting the deadlines.
Yes.
So, I mean, I'm not sure, I don't know, maybe the rest of the board needs to think about it some more, but it's at the very early stages anyway, right, because you would wanna consult with council. But I just had a question, so.
Sure.
Absent adoption of Chapter 193, we, don't we have, as a town, have any kind of ability to contend, condemn a building when it violates the state building code for safety reasons? Or, or not? I mean, right? So even if we didn't adopt Chapter 139?
I don't think you have to adopt 139, that's mass building.
Right, okay, I'm sorry, not the mass building code, but what, what do, what do you want us to approve of then with respect to this presentation? Because right now, we're not following this.
Madam Chair, we're not following this because the money has not been approved.
Yeah, that's the biggest.
Is that the only, okay, but, so that's the only thing holding us back, that we don't have any kind of $100,000 fund to initiate?
Because otherwise, we have no fund in which to take.
Okay, so we, we don't really have to adopt any.
Right, I think.
Procedure.
Yeah.
The procedure's already in place and it applies.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I was getting a little.
And I was just trying to explain.
Okay, I was getting a little confused, I thought that in addition to the rights we have under the building code, this is like a separate.
No, no.
Avenue. This is the same one, we just don't have the funding behind it to do anything, is that right?
That's what I was.
And, and, and something for you to think about, I mean, we had talked about it, and that 100 grand's just a number, let me say, like, like with that, what we'd have to think about is, is, like, a couple of those properties, they have asbestos siding and stuff, so two of the properties alone possibly could cost up to that.
Right.
You know, 100,000, because the asbestos alone, on some of the buildings, say they're roughly 30,000 maybe to demo, it could be another 30, because of the asbestos, because it sidings all around the whole building, and one of them's pretty good size, and one of them is smaller, so I guess with the 100 grand, we'd, we'd find out and do whatever we could do, and then if we needed more to do in another year, we could decide a different amount maybe, depending on what we wanted to do, you know what I mean? So this is just a start.
I get it, I get it. So, in the past though, we really haven't had as many buildings that are, that are, now we have five, it seems like they, they've increased, at least from the time that I've been involved with the town.
Yeah, and I, and I think some of them have been neglected, and they've been there, but I think through the years, they're looking worse. Some people, like, like one of them, they're cutting the trees in the front, and they're, they're changing the property in front, so it's even more noticeable, the building. And one of them was a fire recently, not too long ago, about a year ago, that one on Main Street, that six, and they've just done nothing with it, and, and it really looks bad, you know, and it's right near the main road.
I, right.
It's just as you're coming into the town from the South Bridge End and.
So, so let me ask this too, since the building code, I mean, so that is just the building code, okay, and I see the CMR. If we did, let me put, let me flip the coin on the other side, if we didn't do anything, and we didn't fund the process of condemning these buildings, does the town have any liability? Because we have the authority by statute, if a building is deemed unsafe to life or limb, I think is, are the terminology that's utilized, do we have some liability to do, by doing nothing? Because it seems to me, if somebody were, at, at least raises a question enough, I don't know the case law or anything, but that would be something to pursue as well with, with council, because if there is some kind of duty, and we, we're aware of these buildings, and we're aware they're unsafe, and somebody finds their way onto the property, obviously the property owner is liable, but I question if the town has some, has some duty of care as well, because we have, the statute's in place for the town officials to do something about these buildings. And if we did nothing because we didn't fund this account that you're looking for, I wonder if we open up the door to us being responsible?
I would argue that, I would say that that's probably not the case. If you look at this one, Chapter 139, Section 3A, states that the demolition or removal of a building or structure or securing of vacant land is the owner's liability.
Oh, I, right.
So I would argue that, you know, I would say that there's probably a few communities that go through the process of funding, building removal within their general operating budgets. You know, it's probably one of those, it has to be a community that can actually afford to do such a thing.
Yeah, but this, this, this is, the owner's liability that they're talking about here is the duty of like who, who, oh, who's financially responsible for it, because then it goes on to say it's a debt due to the town. In other words, the statute's saying that we are not responsible for the cost associated with bringing it down. But I'm not su, I'm, I don't buy necessarily that we could use that as like an affirmative defense if we were like negligent in, in doing anything about these. I don't know, I mean, I'm just, that, that is dealing with the money end, that's when saying we get the money back.
When Nelson, when Nelson talks to council though, I'm sure.
Yeah, be a good one of the questions.
Yeah, because that building particularly by, well, probably all of them, but Fisk Hill is, is, I mean, that roof, every single day when I drive by it, it's coming down more.
It's gotten worse in the last three months, I, I'm convinced.
Yeah, it, well, it's visibly worse almost weekly, and I, I'm just waiting to see, you know, what's gonna happen.
Definitely the last six months, I mean, I, I can't believe the change in that, very front, right where you're saying, yeah.
But is that property secure?
No, absolutely not.
It was at one time, Leon, what they did is they had put a fence up there years ago, and now the fence fell down.
The roof is caving in.
The building is falling.
It's, it's literally falling apart.
Yeah.
One good wind, and I'll be back.
Exactly.
But Nelson, your, the fence is gone, is what you're saying?
Fence is, it's there, but it's down, yeah.
It's totally exposed, if somebody were walking and ventured on that, it's falling apart.
And I, just so you know, recent. And I, just so you know, recently, I've sent two letters, notices to the owner. And again, he gave me the impression that we're going to do something and I won't say it fell apart, but, and then there's some negotiations between the property in the front and them and they're supposed to sell it. And, and I mean, ultimately, we want to get whatever we can down and we want to try to do it through the owner, but it's not, nothing's real ever, not, it's not easy, it's just, people will tell you one thing and sometimes they don't always do completely what they say, you know?
Mike?
I've, I've been talking for the last several weeks with Nelson about this and I think he's done an excellent job in his presentation of, of, of this matter. I, I do have some experience in taking down structurally deficient and structurally unsafe buildings. And the, I, I, I think what we have to take into account is that, you know, the, other communities have, are really blighted and they, they have to do this. Sturbridge is, you know, pretty, but it's still, are, you know, the selectmen are responsible ultimately for the health and safety of the community that's, you know, that's in, one of the reasons why communities have selectmen. And I, I think we do have some responsibility. As far as safety goes, you know, I think, you know, I, I just would like to ask, you know, it's, it's a matter of funding. And I, my, my feeling is that we, we created several revolving funds. I don't know if it's appropriate, but I think we should have a revolving fund for abandoned and unsafe buildings and, and appropriate, appropriate a hundred thousand dollars into that fund. Because the problem is, is every ti, time this happens, Nelson will have to go back to town meeting and we will have to go back to town meeting to, to get more funds. As, as the, as these buildings are torn down and the properties are sold and stuff, the money from the purchase of the property should, should come back, you know, the, the amount due, the, the town at that time should go back into, I, I believe, a revolving fund so that in the future, you know, the, whoever's the building inspector and would have the ability to just, you know, go ahead and do it with it, there would be funds available for it. If we have to do it as an individual appropriation each year, it, you know, it just makes it more difficult. The money may not be there to do it at a certain time. So I thi, I would like to see the money, you know, we'll initially appropriate some money and as time goes on, that, that fund gets replenished by, through, through the lien process and, and the assessors would, would commit it to taxes and.
Do you, Madam Chair?
Yeah, we'd.
I don't, I don't think we can do it that way. I think we would do it through a warrant article.
Right.
Process as opposed to having it as a revolving fund. Because I don't know that you can, first of all, cede money to a revolving fund like that, number one. Number two, when the proceeds come into the town through taxes, I don't believe, because that's the way we would end up receiving them, I'm not sure that we can move it to that without an appropriation. But I think a warrant article would probably be.
Okay, that.
A mechanism that would.
Or even.
Because that's the problem that I've had in the past is you, you have to wait six months or a year to get funds for a building that really needs to be turned, torn down today. You know, especially if you have a severe case.
Yeah, if, it's an emergency that needs to be torn down today.
We can go to the finance committee and.
For a reserve fund transfer.
Reserve, reserve fund transfer, there is a mechanism to do that.
You know, and hopefully, you know, if we get this procedure passed by council and, you know, tightened up and step by step and Mary's question on the liability, then we would have to consider funding. I mean, a hundred thousand dollar warrant article is asking a lot of the townspeople for a case that it may never happen. And granted, I know the monies, if we don't spend it, we don't spend it, but, you know, we need to tighten things up. But I do think you should talk to town council and get all this tight and.
Just, just one, just one suggestion as far in, in your procedures there. One instance was, was that I, we didn't tell the homeowner to give the building inspectors, a copy of the building inspector's letter to the insurance company. And that dragged out for several months, the, because the homeowner's insurance, if they knew the town was like really upset about it, they would have moved a lot quicker. Sometimes, you know, some, some homeowners' insurance companies will move very quickly and others try to drag their feet to, to minimize their exposure. And so if, if in your letter you add to the homeowner that they should, you know, give a copy of that letter to the, to the insurance company, it might help expedite. I had, I had a situation where it would have gone a lot smoother and a lot quicker if the insurance company had known earlier.
Yeah, it needs to be, you know, just tightened up and, you know, you can meet with council on that.
Also.
Because I mean, something does need to be done with some of these, but it also can't get to the point where people just let it go and say, oh yeah, the town will take it down and they'll never get the money from me. I mean, have you had any experience in taking down a building?
Yeah, when I worked in Huxbury, we did it.
Yeah, because I think Sturbridge once took a building down.
Yeah, it's the only one I can remember.
But these are, these are building up though.
Next to Milliard?
Yeah, with the Milliard Park is.
Yeah, yeah.
And that was an emergency.
Yeah, and.
Well, I understand, of course, it depends on who's in my seat at the time too, but I mean, I'm going to do everything in my power to get the owner to take it down, but there is point, some, at some point that something needs to be done.
There's a, there's a few on your list that may, you know.
But here's where we've got to be careful too. If we get a, a board together and we decide and, and, and we could set it up to, talk to the board first, meaning the select board, once you decide and you get that board and that board deems that building unsafe, at that point, we do need to do something because then you are responsible, that I'm positive of.
Okay, that's, that's, sorry, you said it more succinctly than I am, but that's what I'm saying. I mean, I can't imagine.
Once we declare it unsafe, it needs to come down.
Okay, well, the old, the, the, the house, some of the other ones are boarded, they're visual blight, but I, I don't know if they're.
Life and limb.
Life and limb, I mean, they're, they're visual blight for sure, absolutely. But the back of Jack's Gas, I would say we are there. That is an unsafe, falling apart building that needs to be addressed, period.
Yeah, and that number six also, I actually have in my records from an engineer, from the insurance company, that says that building needs to come down.
Yeah, so number what's?
That Six Main.
Seven.
Oh, seven is a seven to five.
I thought you said number six, I was looking for.
Seven.
Okay, seven, yeah.
Yeah, I always say six, don't I know it's seven?
That's all right.
I actually have a letter that says that building needs to come down by an engineer.
Because I mean, I'm.
Insurance company's engineer that said it, and yet the bank, you know.
So I mean, are you coming to us tonight and telling us that Seven Main Street is unsafe?
Well, he, he wouldn't have.
I'm saying I have a letter that says an engineer that says it's unsafe.
So I mean, we, we need, then we do need to, to move on these things. You know what I mean? If you, if you're telling us it's unsafe and we're the elected officials and we have a duty under the building code to do something, then we need to do something.
Well, I think that that's what Nelson is saying.
I agree, well, that's.
That, you know, he's asking for, for the ability to speak to council and Nelson doesn't have the ability to put a warrant article on a town meeting warrant, so, you know.
Well, I guess I'll make a motion that we authorize our building inspector to discuss the next steps with respect to these buildings listed on his March 19th, 2018 memo, to determine what our next step should be. That's my motion.
That's what you wanted, Nelson, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second that, I'll second that.
Any discussion, all in favor?
For nothing.
For nothing on that?
And Nelson and I will report back to the board on that.
Of course.
And we, because we have discussed it, we've, we've got kind of a list that we want to ask town council certain questions, you know?
I don't, I don't think this takes a motion, but I would also like the town administrator and building inspector to, to make a recommendation at the appropriate time for a, a warrant article for an appropriation to get this work done.
Well, I, to answer that question, I think it would have to be soon. As you recall, I folk, I gave you folks a.
Timeline.
The articles that I have for town meeting already.
Yeah.
So, you know, we'll be preparing the, the warrant within the next, within the next thirty days. So if, if the board was so willing to add an article, you know, either in this meeting or the next meeting would probably be the time in which to do so in order to get ready for the.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make, then I'll make a motion to add an article for building demolition of unsafe buildings to our, our list of warrant articles.
Second.
Is that with an amount or just an article?
Just open-ended right now?
Well, for the amount of money to be determined, I, I don't want to add to your motion unless you want to. To be determined by consultation with council.
Yeah, I know, it's just an article?
Well, we're reserving, no, I mean, he's, he's reserving a space for an article.
Yeah, but you, you would need a, you would need a dollar amount in it.
Well.
Or could we just do it general right now and plug in money after?
We would have to come up with a number by the time the warrant is finalized.
Right, right, so, just general like that for now and we plug this number.
It would be a placeholder, presumably.
Hold her on the list of, that we approved last meeting.
I would second that.
Added to the list that we approved.
Is this discussion?
Well, you just seconded some discussion.
I know, okay, so, yeah, I mean, I think the, we've, we've done that before where the exact amount has been filled in.
Later.
Later. If you want, because I know you said you put a hundred thousand out there, I mean, that might be the appropriate amount, but from now until the time that we have to finalize the number, if you can kind of sharpen your pencil and, and tell us if a hundred thousand is what we should pursue or not.
And like I say, and, and I'm hoping in a week, maybe even two, I should know about Brookfield Road, I believe the owner's taking care of it, Ledmine, as of today, that he promised me he was taking care of that one, so there's two of them. The other ones, they're not going, I can, Seven Main, I can almost guarantee you, that's not going very far very fast. And Jack's Gas is on back of it, that's not moving quickly either at the moment, so those are the two biggies right now. And then the other one near the Blackington, my concern is I want to talk to the fire chief about it again because it doesn't look as bad on the outside, it's the inside, it's because of the fuel, it would be there. If that building ever burns, that's.
Is that abandoned, Nelson? Is that building abandoned or somebody?
There's nobody living there, but there's wall-to-wall stuff inside there, I mean.
No one lives there.
Right, right. But it's really close to them other houses too, that's the problem.
I know, I know.
And if there's ever a fire, they're going to have one hard time putting that out without everything burning and that whole end up. So there's, there's, there's a safety issue there, but it's a little more complicated than, you know, it's, it's, it's safety and fire, but it's, but they also describe safety and fire in that 143, that Section 6, I think it is, when that list one through six, they actually, one of those one through sixes clearly describes that situation. But again, it's, it's, we're talking with the fire chief Leon, a group deciding, you know, because I do pretty good with group decisions, you know, as far as, you know, it gets a pretty good input. And I think that's the way to go. It's, 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 it's like even, even these, ultimately, it's you being the selectman that ordered me to take that building down. Because that's, that's, I've, I've got a checklist somewhere, I'll give you the checklist sometime too. And like I say, ultimately, it's you guys that's going to say, Mr. Building Commissioner, take that building down. You know what I mean? So.
Okay. Can I ask a question first?
There's a motion in a second.
Yeah, no, we're still discussing.
Discussion.
Nelson, do you know what other towns do in regards to a demolition fund? Do they have it? Don't they have it?
Yes, yes. I've, I've, I've worked in towns that actually have it, I've worked in towns, they put like five thousand dollars a year, they, they let it get to a certain point. And then if you use it and it goes back down, they, they put it back in again. But yes, to answer your question, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, and I know some towns that put a lot of money, for whatever reason, in demolition accounts. I, I know of some towns, they put actually five hundred thousand.
Okay, Nelson, could you maybe get us a list of some towns that?
Yeah.
Run the gamut from, you know, five thousand each year.
And I think every town's different and I think we don't have as much problem as some towns. One of our neighboring towns, you probably know which one I'm talking about, what I mean, there's a lot of buildings that come down. There's a couple of towns, it's not too far from us, but you're talking a lot of buildings that take down constantly.
That town has cleaned up a lot of buildings, a lot.
Oh, yes, it has, it certainly has.
Yeah, but we don't have as bad a problem as far as that goes, but, but we don't, not that we don't want it to get worse, but I think, especially the buildings right on Main Street, I mean, I don't know, it just doesn't look good if you're pulling into town and you're, first thing you see is a building that's burnt out completely.
That town, if it's the same town I'm, that we're talking about, it doesn't matter, but if it is, that town got also a lot of grant money to refurbish a lot of those buildings that were decrepit and falling apart. And now they're looking like nice pieces of property, they made little play areas for the children, I mean, but with funded money, that's all I'm saying, you know, I, I, I know it's the same town, it's, it's got to be. And, and so they got grant monies to, to help the homeowner refurbish the building because they were falling apart.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, all in favor of the motion? All opposed, oops, four, nothing. Okay, so Nelson, you have your direction on the.
Yes, thank you.
Demolition. Okay, now you also have a.
An article.
Fee changes?
Fee changes.
Peter is my plumbing inspector. He, he just asked to come today too.
No basketball to watch?
No.
Thursday.
Natural Thursday.
We all know.
Yeah.
I think Leon had, had passed out to you guys that building department fee schedule that's up here, but you also received one that was highlighted in yellow like this. And the reason I did this is I figured that way it would be easier that you could look at what we're asking for and what was paid before. So as we're going through the screen, if you had both of those, these two, I'll keep bouncing back into, because I think it'll make it easier, especially with the yellow coloring. I think one of the biggest things, I had talked to Leon about this too, is here's what happens when people come in and, especially new houses and stuff and contractors, everybody's trying to save a buck. Nobody wants to tell you the truth. If, if fees be based on the cost of construction, it's a natural tendency to tell you less than what it is. I mean, I think everybody's that way. And it's not fair, because I think what I, we've been seeing in the building department is, is the contractors, because they did it so much, they're willing to fill a little more. And the homeowner, most of them, not that they're scared, but they're nervous about it, so they tell us a truer number, so they pay more for the fees and that's not fair. So we thought about it some and I think the best bet is, there's going to be a fee calculation which is up on the board, you know, if, if you don't agree with it, that's okay, but we had looked at different fees, different places, and I think it's, it's, it's pretty straightforward what, what we'd like to charge. But by doing this, it'll be square footage, nobody can lie to us. You're going to pay X number of dollars for the fee, everybody's going to pay the same, whether you're a homeowner or a builder or whoever you are. So we felt that was really important to mention that there's a fee calculation and this is what it is. So if you've got a two thousand square foot house, it's going to be a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. Yes, some houses are more than others, some are going to use a little more fancy countertops and different things, but you've got to come up with something and I think this is pretty good. I don't want to worry about whether you're using marble countertops or Formica countertops or whatever, I, I think this is pretty fair and it's definitely a lot fair than what's been happening in the past. So that was the first thing we wanted to mention with that screen, okay? And then we'll go to the next screen. And the next screen is, is, we listed everything out and what we tried to do is list it out because some of our old lists were like scattered all over the place.
and our last fees that, that we can tell were changed was two thousand and ten, so it was like eight years ago. So I mean, I, I, I think it's time that some of the fees should be increased, and we didn't really increase a lot of them, and, and we tried to keep the cost down, because, you know, we're not trying to feed to death, we're just trying to pay for the overhead, for the paperwork, for, for all the expenses, for, you know, we've, we've, we've got different things, you know, that we have to pay for, you know, my secretary, myself, lights, the building, and everything. And we noted what the changes were, like, like the fees per inspection, we, we first started with the building department on this screens, and we had been charging six dollars per thousand, what we'd like to do is go from six for single families and additions from six to seven. And we just have, have bases, you know, a base fee, and it really wouldn't matter on a single family, but as far as additions, it might, because it might be something small. And so that was, that was what we proposed on that one, one dollar. And then as you go down, the insulating, we went, we would like to go from fifty dollars to seventy-five. Solar, from six to seven per thousand. Garages and assist, accessories, again, if you were doing something small, we always put the basis, case, say you were doing one window or something, you know, and it wasn't a very big thing. And again, we was going from six to seven. Yard sales, we charged two dollars for, for yard sale signs, we want to just make it free, just come in and tell us you're doing the yard sales. And don't put your, your, you know, your signs up on town property, don't put them on telephone poles, and take them down after you're done. I think that's the biggest thing we want to get through to people, more than, than the two dollars. Come in, we'll give you your, your permit and do the other things, and we'll mention that as they come in.
Of course, Nelson, will they even come in if it's free?
No.
Okay, maybe it's a bad idea, maybe we shouldn't.
I thought exactly the opposite, I thought knowing it's free, they'll come in if they, if it's a charge.
Why bother?
Yeah, they don't need it.
Why would you bother if you don't need a permit?
No.
You don't have to pay anything, you don't, why, why would they bother?
Well, personally, not, not a lot of people honor this anyway, so.
Well, I know, but why get more people that don't?
See, I was, I was thinking.
And if we raise it too much to five bucks, will they come in?
Then they won't come in, but I, I would think free they would, because it's free.
So why go in?
No, right, exactly.
So you would think they're going in to pay the two dollars?
To get their.
Okay, it doesn't matter.
We can leave it at two bucks, it's not a big thing, that's fine.
No, I mean, in the scale of them.
They're balancing the town budget on the yard signs.
That's right.
Yeah, or you could do it free, and if they start without a permit, it could be five bucks.
I don't think that's right.
Why?
I don't think it's right, because some people may not know that they should do that, and you're punishing the person who may not know. You either charge it upfront or you don't. But to chart, to go and
That's more like a fine, what he's saying.
Yeah, but since when have we fined people for no yard sale sign? I mean, we'd be fining them every other day. You'd have to hire someone just to go get, collect the fines.
In the, if you, if you look at the bottom of the fee structure, if somebody starts building without a permit.
Yeah, but that's not a, that's not a yard sign that's gonna go up.
Well, for the weekend.
What was your rea-
A weekend yard sign is not the same.
Nelson, what was your reasoning as the building inspector suggesting that it go free? What was your reasoning behind it?
Pain in the neck for the building department.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Really.
Permitting it.
That was the biggest reason, you know?
Oh, well.
By the time you take the two bucks, you take the paperwork, you, you deal with the people and the time and everything else, it's
I would agree, I would have it free, but it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Well, Madam Chair, if you make it free, do they have to fill out any paperwork? I mean, I can go with the free, I, I understand what you're saying, for the two dollars, it's not worth all the trouble, I get that. But if you make it free, then don't even bother with the permit. Because I don't really think they're gonna come in for a free permit, nobody's gonna come. I don't believe. But if it's free and they don't even have, I mean, I'm asking you actually, Nelson, because this is your expertise, would it work to not even, I mean, tons of them go up every weekend, especially when it's
Right, right.
Without permits.
Anyway, without a permit.
Right, the biggest thing I want to get through to them is, is don't keep the signs up, don't put them on town property, don't put them on telephone poles and stuff like that.
I know, but they're gonna anyway.
Yeah.
They're gonna do it anyway. I mean, they put political signs on telephone poles, let alone yard sale signs. I, I hear you, and I understand that, but maybe on the town's website, and maybe through the town administrator's blog, we can say that the signs are now, yard sale signs are free, however, we're asking you to please, don't do this, don't do that, and pick, take them off. I mean, I don't know, it's just a thought. I'm trying to get you to not have to deal with even the permit for free. Because if it's a pain in the neck for the two bucks, it's gonna be worse for free.
Right, and either way, I'm gonna be looking for the signs and taking them down.
Exactly, exactly.
Because that's basically what happens now.
Yeah.
You know, and we haven't really punished anybody if I haven't, it was just a case we take them down, so.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't mind having them free, and if Leon could put it on his blog and we list out the things that we want, maybe it would help.
And on the site, on the website too. That would be my thing, but that's just a thought.
Make sense too.
Okay, let's.
Okay. And then we, we went from residential to commercial. Again, it was from, it was the six to the seven per thousand, we had the base fees. Insulation, we went from one hundred to one fifty, because they're larger buildings. Solar, seven to six, six to seven. Cell towers. We never had it really clear in a sprinkler permits, but with this way, we'd have it listed, a hundred dollar base and two dollars per head for, for a while there, I think it was just missed completely. And this way, what we did do in these fees is we tried to pick up anything that was missing also and add it in there, so that at least we had it on paper. And that's about that on that one, and I guess we could go to the next, next one. And then we, we went from building department, because there wasn't a ton of changes in the building department, other than we're trying to make it clearer. Eventually, we're gonna put it on the web and, and make it as clear as we can too, and swapped up a little bit, because right now, it, it can be a tendency hard to read. And then the plumbing fees, Peter, if you want, you want, or you want me to, whatever.
Oh, you can walk through it if you want.
Okay, we, I broke it down, the fees paid to the inspector, basically, they've been getting forty dollars for how many years, Peter? Quite a few. And, and electrical too, but this just happens to be the plumbing screen. So, and we had some meetings with Leon, with Barbara, and we had discussed it some, and different numbers had been tossed around, and, you know, we had discussed it quite, not quite a bit, but a bit, and we came up with, to go from forty dollars to fifty dollars. The reasoning is, is, you know, everything's going up, and they do use their own car, their own vehicle. You know, they pay for gas and fuel and the maintenance of the buildings and everything. So again, we went from forty to fifty, which isn't a huge, huge jump. Then what we did is, that second column, we put the number of inspections required for certain types of, of inspections, like single family, we knew with the plumbing there would be two. So we went from a hundred to one fifty, because Peter will actually, if you guys agree with the increase, he'll be getting a hundred dollars. The other fifty will go, be going to the building department, because Cindy has to track everything. Obviously, you know, we've got work in the office to do and everything, so, you know, we felt that was fair. Two families, there's four inspections, because you've got two units. So we, we, we only brought it from a hundred to two hundred, so the building department really wouldn't be making anything on that, but we didn't, we didn't want to feed people to death, so we tried to do what we, we felt was fair. Additions, alterations is two. Again, it was a hundred dollars, so we jumped back to that one fifty, which, you know, we were getting before, so we were making fifty bucks, and we figured we'd break even, we didn't, you know, we didn't really increase it a lot. The next one, the repairs, from forty to fifty, it was seventy-five, we left it at the seventy-five. Miscellaneous replacement fixtures, because of the fifty bucks, we went from fifty to seventy-five to bring some, a little money in so that the department wouldn't cost the town for the inspections. Sewer tie-ins, it was seventy-five, he'd be getting the fifty, we thought we were okay with.
If you think of one thing, Nelson, is by increasing the fees, the, the town is actually taking a more of a percentage of what the fees were, because before it was a fifty dollar fee, they were giving me forty, the town was keeping only ten. If we raise it to what we're looking at, it would be more money to the town also.
And some of them, we left the same, because we weren't trying to raise the fees any more than we had to, because I, I, I feel that you, the board, have sent the direction to me in other meetings, that we didn't really want to increase the fees tremendously ever. That's the impression I got, maybe I'm wrong, but, and, and I don't think at this rate we'll lose money, but I don't think they're excessive either, I'm hoping.
I think it would, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I think it would be fair to start with, you know, the reason we looked at this in the first place, and how he looked at this, was he looked at our neighboring communities, he looked at how other communities are, are setting their fees, they, we found where we were fair, we found where we were really below what the marketplace is going for, and that's how the recommendations that he brings forward today were developed.
Okay, because I was gonna ask that question about, you know,
We did.
what comparison is there, you know?
We did.
Yeah, but I mean, it would be, it's always nice to see on paper, you know, because we can say, yes, we're low here, high here.
I do have backup information, the towns that we did were, and there were, there were towns close, because we felt that's what really counted. We did Auburn, Spencer, Oxford, Webster, Dudley, Chalm, and Southridge. And we did have, when I say we had meetings, Leon, I, and Barbara, and, and, and there was quite a discussion on it, and, and, and there was quite a few questions, some from Leon, from some Barbara, and they made me, you know, answer the questions, and why this, why that, and how are we coming up with this, and, and, and we had discussed it in quite a few, quite a bit of detail, so we didn't just necessarily come up with these, these numbers at first, they actually changed, not tremendously, but they changed some. Some went up, some went down, some didn't make sense to Leon or Barbara, and then we agreed, and we changed them a bit and everything, so.
Okay, and on this plumbing here, this sewer tie-in, what inspection is that?
Sewer tie-in would just be a, a one-time inspection.
Yeah, but I thought the water sewer department and DPW did all inspections on sewer and water.
Yes, the, if you, if you were to come be within ten feet of the foundation, that is under the plumbing code, the sewer department has to stop ten feet from the foundation, that's determined as a plumbing.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I was just surprised to see it there.
Yeah, it's from, ten feet from the interface of the foundation wall, is my jurisdiction.
Okay.
Even for a septic system. If you're installing a new septic tank, the first ten feet is, is my jurisdiction.
Okay, something new every day and something new to forget. Mike?
Yeah, and they're required to, to inspect to make sure there's no illicit connections to the sewer system as part of that inspection. If there was a sump pump that was pumping into a sanitary sewer, they would say, no, that's, that's illicit, and you can't do that, for example, so. I, I, that's a reasonable, reasonable inspection and a reasonable fee. And overall, my question is, is the, does the overall cost of inspections, you know, for all, all you do within a year, does it re, it will reasonably reflect the cost to the town for the inspectional services department? Because I, I just, you know, I don't want to get the fees up there so high that they're not reasonably reflective of the, the total cost, cost to the town. I mean, as long as we're, you know, we're fair and equitable on the fees, I'm not concerned, but if they, they're
That was the test that we used when we looked at our neighboring communities
Yeah.
to make sure that we were, and we found that we were low in a lot of places, we found that we were right in the middle, where we, on others, which is why they're, those are not going to be recommended to be changed.
Yes, you know, some of them are going up quite a bit, and so I just wanted to make the point that overall, our overall cost is reflected in, in the fee increases, and, and they are truly fees.
Think, think of this, Mike, too. And people don't realize, and it's not us, we've, we're, we're seeing a lot more rules and regulations dictated through the state. I mean, energy code, he's got many more things that he has to worry about, I have to worry about. Ideas are great, but ideas, but they mandate them, but they never pay for them, they make us pay for them, meaning the town. And I think this helps reflect that a little bit, but I don't think it's anywhere near excessive, because if you took a building commissioner ten years ago, and what his duties are today, I bet you they've at least went up a third, and so has plumbing and electrical. Just the schooling alone and everything else is just unbelievable compared to what it was ten years ago. So that's, that's my answer to that, I guess.
I just wanted to throw out a, something that the assessors do when they're, when they're, you, you, you got that hundred and fifty dollar per square foot residential construction cost? I noticed the assessors will increase by ten percent or fifteen dollars in your case, for like luxury construction. If, if they determine that it's average construction, it would be the one fifty, and if it was economy, say, construction, they reduce it by ten percent, or it would be a hundred and thirty-five dollars per square foot. Would that be too complicated to incorporate?
We talked about it, and yeah, that was the ultimate decision, it's so complicated, we, we wanted to keep it simple as we could, you know, you know, that's exactly the reason, Mike.
I, I just wanted to, you know, question about that.
But we did feel it was needed to be done, because like I say, I'm telling you, I've seen houses, two thousand square feet, when I was here, where you would see almost two thou, a couple thousand dollars difference in a permit, not a couple, but a good thousand dollars difference in a permit fee, because of what people would say it would cost them to build. And that's not good.
Yeah, they'd say
Fair.
It's not fair.
One guy'd come in and say it's a hundred dollars a square foot for the same type of construction, and somebody else would come in and say it's a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot.
Right, right, so we had to come up with something.
That's not fair.
All right.
Okay.
Basically, I think we did that one, we can go on to that next screen. Proposed residential.
Sorry.
I think we went backwards a little bit, yeah, there you go. Gas, Peter, explain the seventy-five to ninety there, because we actually went down on that.
Originally, the town was charging ninety dollars for a gas inspection, and this, most of these gas inspections are just a one-time inspection. And I just thought it was a little high to, to charge ninety for one, one inspection. Basically, the town was paying me forty, and they were getting the other remaining money of the ninety.
And it was a glitch in the system, so, I mean, we rarely looked at this, Mike, and like I say, how often do you see people lowering it, and I'm not saying we did on everything, but that wasn't correct, and we feel we corrected it.
Yeah, it's gotta be fair and equitable, and that's what you're doing.
And that's what we did when we looked at other communities and where the averages were, we saw where we were out of whack, both below and high, and tried to bring them more into a middle ground.
Okay, and then we went to the electrical. The same, and we had quite a discussion on the, on the new homes, and the overhead, and the underground, and everything. And basically, their fees will go from forty to fifty, and those costs, we kept them the same, but we did have some discussion with, didn't we, Leon? And we ended up staying with them, but we, we put down the average number of inspections too, because at one time, one of them was listed with the trench, and I had talked to Clyde, I mean, after, after with Leon and Clyde, and I made sure this, that like the two inspections were two and not three, because there was some confusion, and I had raised that, and Leon picked up on it, but then Clyde said, no, he can do it with the two inspections, so we kept it back down to where it was. So we didn't touch it, which, again, is fair and equitable as far as the price. The only ones that changed was, but there was above-ground pool, because there is definitely two inspections, and we're paying him fifty, so there's a hundred, so we put it to one, that did jump from seventy-five to one fifty. I mean, we debated even one and a quarter, but, but there is, because of those two, is because of the two inspections. And it changed from that forty to fifty. And, and, and we talked about the percentages and everything, but we wanted to keep it simple in numbers like one fifty or one hundred or whatever, we didn't want to go ten dollars or fifteen dollars. And sometimes it might seem it's off a little bit, but we compensated on the other end, so, so basically, we kept it simple and yet tried not to raise it too much, if that makes sense, and.
I would also say, and maybe it's appropriate to say now, that if you wait eight, ten, fifteen years between making adjustments, then you'll start to see those percentage increases being astronomically high. I know that that's not the case in a lot of these, but, you know, if you, if we set a policy or practice, at least, of saying every five years to, to look at our fees critically to make any recommendations, that, that will prevent that, that will prevent the increases from being dramatic. Go ahead, Nelson, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and some of those, we were actually, you know, I mean, we were, we were almost, some of them, we weren't even making money on, you know? So, I, I think we straightened them all out. And then there was a commercial electrical. And again, them all stayed the same.
Why was there a difference between a manufactured home and a stick-built home?
Well, here's the difference because I asked that one too.
Doesn't make sense to me right now.
Well, a lot of it, a lot of it, a lot of it is done in the inspections. Because you think about it, your walls are up. You don't have to look at your outlets. You don't have to look at your wiring as far as the inside of the house.
Yeah, well, I'm talking about the service inspections for the underground service and overhead service inspections. There's a difference of fifty dollars. Why?
Back it up again for a minute.
New home, overhead service. Two hundred.
Okay, new home, overhead. New home, underground, so you've got the underground to do. That's why, that's more.
Yeah, that makes sense. But then you've got a manufactured home, overhead service at two, two twenty-five. That's more. But the underground service is two fifty and that's less. So, I, can you explain that to me? Why, because the, you know, basically, you're, you're inspecting the, you know, to the meter box from the, wherever, if it's, you know, from the, from the pole to the meter box or from the service box to the meter box. And I can understand why there's two inspections because you've got to inspect the conduit and then you've got to expect, once the wire is pulled, then you've got to go back out and inspect again if it's underground.
I, I see your question.
But why would it be different for a manufactured home than a stick-built house? It just...
Yeah.
You know, it's like...
Maybe it should be both, both of them should be two and three.
Yeah.
New home and manufactured home, unless you can think of a reason.
Unless there's a reason for it.
I, I would have to talk to Clyde, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, there could be a very good reason for it.
You know what I was looking at? It was manufactured and it was new and you were looking at the outlets, but I see what you're saying.
Oh, yeah, if it's a manufactured home, there's a lot less inspection because it's done, the inspection's done by a third party, yeah, for, you know, independent inspector.
Yeah, yeah, it's almost a reverse.
But for the service, I don't see where it's very much different.
We can check on that. And again, those went from fifty to seventy-five only because we were going to end up paying out the fifty to the, for the fees for the inspectors.
Yep.
We just jumped them to the seventy-five. And even then, we kept them at seventy-five. We didn't go to the hundred or anything. So, basically, as far as, when I say any questions, I'll check on them.
Yeah.
Those overheads, we can tweak them.
Well, it could be a good reason.
Could be.
But it doesn't make sense why one...
One be.
Oh, thank you very much.
Oh, you want this up?
Yep. And I was going to turn the lights on too.
As far as these fees go, I think, I think I'm correct, Mary. You correct me if I'm wrong. If I figure out the differences on them, isn't it just a case of you guys accepting the fees, right?
Yeah, we would have to approve. No, we'd have to approve the new fee schedule.
I can come back and add to it.
Yeah, when you get the...
As far as the other fees, are you okay with the other stuff?
Do you need a motion?
Well, you want to do them?
Yeah.
We can wait. It's not going to make a difference if it's...
We can wait until...
We want to have these fees in place on July first, anyway.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, we would. But we might as well wait just till we get the few qualifications.
Yeah, we had a couple of questions, so just check into them. And then at a future meter, meeting when the town administrators says we're all set.
No, I know.
And, and as far as, as, as these towns, and I didn't want to complicate it, but if, if anybody ever wants to look, I mean, here's the towns. Here's every town and their fees and all that stuff.
Oh, yeah, no, Nelson, you know me, I do like to see and compare. But I mean, if there were four of you people in on it and you all...
And, Mary, electrical?
If there was just you, Nelson, I'd definitely have to see it.
Hey, electrical, listen, Mary, electrical, building, hey, plumbing and gas. I did bring it, but sometimes you, you don't want to complicate something so much too that...
Oh, right, right.
It confuses people, I guess.
Yeah, but we always do look for comparisons.
I try to do my homework, I really do. But sometimes it's so hard to explain everything. It, it even confuses myself and I, I, I did it, you know? So, and it, and it's like the one about, you know, removing the houses too. I, I try to make it as clear as I can. But I think the concept is a really good idea. But it's like anything, you don't want to, and, and speaking on your side, Mary, you don't want to abuse anything either. But it's, it's always to try to get the homeowner to do, or the property owner to do what they're supposed to do first, foremost. I mean, that's like a last resort, you know?
Absolutely.
But, but some of them, I'm just running into stone wall. But it's usually the homeowner is the bank. I'm one of the tough ones.
Well, Nelson, Peter.
I would just like to say, thank you for considering these proposals.
Well, thank you for getting it all together and spending an evening with us.
Not every day that the plumbing inspector and the building inspector...
Last time I was here was about three years ago.
Yeah.
Like I say, that forty dollars that they received, that was like at least nine, two thousand at that.
Yeah, because it used to be thirty, then we raised it to forty.
When do you think they raised it to forty a year?
About three years ago. And then they gave me a stipend of a hundred dollars for gas.
Yeah, I remember that.
I remember that.
Yeah, but, you know, I, I do, I do do other things other than inspections. There's, you know, there's the time to fill out the paperwork, using the computer, getting it back to Cindy. We just had a case just recently in Sturbridge where a plumbing permit came in and I refused it and the contractor and the engineer disagreed with me. And I had to make several phone calls to the Boston office and get emails back from them. And these gentlemen ended up going before the state for a variance. So, it's, you know, time-consuming to write up a letter, supporting it or denying it, citing the code, why you denied it.
And there's no fee that you necessarily get for that.
Yeah, at that point.
Yeah, you know, you know what we're seeing a lot? What Peter's saying is, is a lot of these buildings, like, like dentist's office, different ones, they really only want, you know, like a couple bathrooms, but they need the variance to qualify for it. And they want Peter to sign off and he can't. It's a process and he's got to follow the process. And I won't say they don't get it, but, but, but then they don't go for the variance at first and then it takes a little time and they want to open, right, Peter?
And I just, the one in Charlton was approved for the variance along with a letter from me and that. Then the one that was in Charlton was denied. They wouldn't give them the variance. They ended up, they're going to have to add the more bathrooms as I stated in the beginning.
Well, people don't like to listen, that's for sure.
Well, we got...
Well, have a nice drive home and...
Oh, Madam Chair, I had a question for Peter just before he leaves, if that's okay.
Sure.
When you get a plumbing permit application that has a backflow device on it, do you, do you refer that to the water department?
I, I haven't in the past, no.
It's, it's required that they, that the water department, before you can grant that, the, the water department has to approve the type of device and the location because there's regulations that say, you know, I've had, you know, a plumbing inspector approve a backflow preventer that was twelve feet up in the air. And the wa, the water regulations say that it has to be between, I don't know, three and four feet, say, above the floor. You can't have it hanging, because you can't, it's hard to test it. You had to, you'd have to be on a ten-foot ladder to test the device there. And it's just crazy.
The few that I've looked at, but never really referred it to the sewer department, is usually it's twelve inches off the wall.
Yeah, exactly, you're right.
So that you can get into it. And it's usually at a thirty-six to forty-eight inch height. What they would like to see, at least that's what Southridge likes to see.
Yeah.
Thirty-six to forty-eight.
But...
So that it's...
You know, in, in, in all fairness, a lot of towns have a, a problem with the plumbing inspector or plumbing department referring the backflow preventers to the water department. But the regulations say that it has, the, before they can install or, or a backflow preventer can be approved, it has to go, be, also be approved by the water department.
Usually if they're a testable device.
Yeah.
Usually an accepted one.
But...
In most towns. No, it's something I can...
But they...
Something I can check with them and...
The, the other thing is they're, they're required by DEP to keep a list of all devices and so forth. So, if, and believe it or not, there's been some that have slipped through the cracks.
Madam Chair, perhaps maybe Peter can check into that and work with Nelson and Nelson can forward you a response on this issue.
Yeah.
Thank you again.
Just a matter of communication between the two departments might be good.
I can run down and talk to them and see what they require. And through Nelson, through Leon, we can get it straightened out.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you for your time as well.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have town administrators update.
I would ask that the board of selectmen allow for plantings at the Civil War Monument per the request of Ali Gatchel and the library. They are looking to put historic plantings around the Civil War Monument.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Okay, three to nothing.
As we do not have a full board, I will ask, I, I suppose we will carry over the amendments to the policy and appointment procedures to the, next time we have a full board.
Yes, please.
I will ask that the board of selectmen vote to renew the seasonal retail licenses for both Hemlock Ridge Golf Course and Jellystone Campground. They are a, they are the only seasonal licenses that we have. And we do have a place where the three of you will need to sign. They have to be signed originally by the, by the applicants, but we know that we're going to, and that has to be done before the end of March. So, we do have to do that tonight.
Do you need a motion to approve the licenses for... Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Thank you very much. I have no other town administrators update. I...
Well, you had those...
I was going to do that on the new business.
Oh, okay, that's right. We have a...
Old business.
Old business, Priscilla?
Just on charter, do we have any, is anybody coming at any point in time?
Yes, she can come. You're going to be happy to hear that. The new charter rep is coming. She can come on April second.
Yeah, I think, yes, okay.
So, but I am going to bring her. Because we might be months before we can get her in again, so.
Hey, Mike, any old business?
Not at this time, no.
Oh, there's licensed, okay. Um, new business, Priscilla?
No.
Mike? I just remind you, we do have a budget meeting, eight-thirty Saturday morning. And then Leon, you had a few things last minute.
I just have three last-minute items. I would ask the board of selectmen to accept a donation of one thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars in the memory of Doris Leszynwinski to beautify two flower beds in the front of the senior center.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Three to nothing.
I would ask that the board of selectmen accept the resignation from Ann Jones from Conservation. She is planning on retiring.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
I would also ask that the board of selectmen concur with the appointment of Joanne Everson of Fiscale. She's actually a town resident to serve as the recording secretary for the finance committee. We had a successful search in which Joanne stood out among the applicants. And I'd like to have her appointment begin March twenty-ninth at a rate of pay of fifteen eighty-seven per hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Show your neck of the woods, Mike.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I have no other business.
Okay, correspondence?
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, Priscilla.
February fourteenth, Charter Communications, franchise fee remittance from January first, twenty seventeen, to December thirty-first, twenty seventeen. March first, Tantascra Regional School Union sixty-one district, notice of public hearing on proposed twenty eighteen to nineteen budget to be held tomorrow. March twentieth, six-thirty PM at Tantascra Regional Junior High School Cafeteria. March first, WRTA customer bulletins, notice of public meetings, proposed routing, and scheduled changes.
Okay.
I would ask if anyone is at home looking, who relies on WRTA, to be particularly notice, the notices about the WRTA service cuts.
All right, okay, and if anybody wants the number on the Tantascra proposed budget, it's twenty-three million, one hundred sixty-six thousand, four hundred fifty-three dollars and sixty-five cents. It's up two point seven one percent.
Should we hold the minutes until everybody's here?
Yeah, because it's a, it's a mix.
And there's a couple of them that we wouldn't have enough.
Right, because I...
Right. And one that I wasn't either, nor Craig, so we don't have enough.
Yeah, no, that's it, it's two mix and match.
So, we, we'll hold those till the next meeting or if we can't approve them because there's not enough?
Yeah.
Selectmen here too, that have been at those meetings too.
Right, so citizens forum, they're all quiet?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Three to nothing.
Not bad, Mary. You're only, you're only, it's two minutes off.
Yeah, well, Leon was more confident in that eight than me.
I was very confident.
You were too confident.
You know better than that.
You were too confident.